...the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the
Water Rights Presentation. Planning Director Becky Crockett, thank you, welcome all.
Thank you. So can you folks on the screen, can you hear me?
Thumbs up?
Yes.
Yes, great, okay. So what I'd like to do is have you Jake introduce the people that are on the screen and then give it back to me and I'm going to say a few words before we get started and identify some of the key issues and questions that have come up here in Curry County that hopefully you guys can cover in the context of your presentation, okay?
That sounds great. So thanks for making time in the agenda today for us commissioners and Becky, thank you for coordinating this. My name's Jake Johnstone. I am not Jake State Farm although there's a likeness. I am the Southwest Region Manager covering Jackson, Josephine, Coos, Curry and Douglas Counties. On the line with me is Ivan Gahl of Oregon Water Resources Department. He is the Field Services Administrator out of the Salem Office. Also Anne Hayden Lesmeister of ODFW is the Instream Flow Coordinator and Adrian Avery of ODFW as well as Jeanette Fossera of ODFW. If I mess up on any of the introductions folks by all means later when we get to presentations maybe you can correct me. So I'll turn it back over to Becky.
Okay, thanks so much Jake. The one thing I wanted to say before we get too far along the way is I have a lot of concerns about these in-stream rights that have been proposed but I want to make it clear that Curry County has especially appreciated the staff that you guys have here in the county to help us, especially Scott Cisalini, Ryan Carr from Water Resources and then Steve Majeur and Laura Green from ODFW. I can't tell you every other day how often we have some pretty difficult issues to deal with and your people have been awesome, just awesome. So I want to say that before we get started here. So in regards to comments on the in-stream water rights, like land use, water rights is an issue set forth in state law yet implementation really is dictated by historical use and case law. It's difficult, it's really difficult, difficult for people to understand and I appreciate the difficulty in staff trying to work with people to get through the process. I'm not an expert in water rights. The issues that I've raised come from today, come from the Farm Bureau Attorney, Mary Ann Cooper, who is a recognized attorney in the state of Oregon on a lot of legislative issues that have environmental impacts for farming and issues that we face downstairs. And I'm really hopeful that with today's presentation, we can all get a better understanding of what's being proposed and what the impact potentially can be on the residents in Curry County. Essentially, ODFW has filed for in-stream water rights on several stream reaches in Curry County, including the mainstem Chetco and the mainstem Winchuck. The proposed applications will have a significant impact on farmers as well as almost anyone trying to drill a well within a half mile of one of these reaches of the river. We believe the proposed in-stream water rights will cause injury to the public by preventing future development and will negatively impact economic opportunities in this region. And each week, we're faced with not being able to issue a planning clearance downstairs for a building because the owner or the applicant either has water but always failed to get a water right for the water that they're using, or they bought buildable land quote unquote with no water rights. And currently, when we're working with these folks, we call the water master and get them involved and usually people can get water rights because Curry County is not over-appropriated for water. This will likely change with ODFW's request, causing a lot of these people not to be able to achieve water on their private property after they have made significant financial contributions to have that property. In the second page of the memo that I'm looking at, I've identified some questions or issues for discussion with these experts that we have on the stream or on the screen, excuse me. And I think that the key issues first of all are having a better understanding of what the justification is for the proposed in-stream water rights that are being requested. And plus, I'd like us to understand the specific injury and supporting documentation to fish that would result from not having these in-stream rights proposed. I think it's important to understand the justification for the proposed limitations on in-stream water rights, what they would pose for future development and impacts to Curry County. And we need to understand the process, which is very difficult for most people to understand. How do we object if we want to object? And then a couple of key issues that have come up just later this, later today is there was a notification sent to Curry County and that was in your packet. That notification didn't include streams on the Rogue Basin, which I was confused about because those, several of those are in Curry County. So I would have to ask Water Resources, are the proposed streams on the Rogue Basin in Curry County still proposed or are they taken off the list? And why didn't we get notification for those? And if we didn't get notification, is there a requirement for re-notification for those streams? And then a question on the Chetco River specifically, was the city of Brookings notified since that's their main water source on the Chetco River? So those are just some of the questions that I put out there and with that, I'm going to let the agencies be able to address the issue and answer those questions, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Becky and the board commissioners. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Okay, I would, I would like to share a presentation I have here. I have shared it with you guys in PDF format. According to the go-to meeting here, I would need to be made a presenter to have the ability to share my screen with you. So I, I'm not sure who the wizard is in the room, but-
We got one.
She is on her way.
Help us, Mr. Wizard.
Um, I will address quickly though the question regarding, oh, okay, can you still hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Oh, can. Okay. I will address quickly though while I get things set up here, the question regarding the Rogue Basin. In this presentation, I'm going to explain how the, there we go. Sure. Okay, I'm getting a bunch of screens here. I'm almost there. So can you folks, can you folks see the slide here, in-stream water right application process?
Just popped up, thank you.
Awesome, great. So briefly to address that Rogue question, through this presentation, I'm going to explain how the process is for these applications. And in that, there's the water availability basin. So when I get to that slide, if I, if I steamroll past it, please poke me and I'll explain a little more further while, why you haven't been notified for some and notified for others. So again Jake Johnstone, WRD, Ivan Gahl, WRD on the line. I'm going to try and move through these slides relatively quickly. I know Anne and ODFW have a few slides they'd like to share and I think that discussion is going to be the more robust part of this conversation anyway. So again, stop me if you have a question. Uh, let's see if, can you get the slides to move? There we go, all right. So today's discussion is going to be about in-stream water rights, just kind of explaining the history behind those, the statutory authority and the rule authority there, how we estimate natural stream flow, how we evaluate the requests for new in-streams, the impact those in-stream water rights have to water availa-, water availability and future allocation, and the water right application process, which Becky alluded to being rather complex and I hope to try and explain it a little bit for you. So the in-stream water rights, it's 1987, or 1987 legislative concept called in-stream a beneficial use. So it made it something that could be allocated for water rights. Chapter 690 Division 77 goes into laying out the framework for that, implements in-stream water rights in the law, set equitable allocation and established management objectives. They can be filed for by state agencies, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, Oregon Parks and Recreation and Department of Environmental Quality. Out-of-stream uses shall not factor in when determining the amount of in-stream water rights. I'll go into that a little more further through the slides here. In-stream water right amounts shall not exceed the estimated natural flow. And to take home here for this is that OWRD evaluates in-stream water rights based on the natural stream flow, not water available on the water availability, uh, the water, water availability reporting system, sorry. So to continue along that, 690-077 Division 77 has a subsection six there and I think this can help kind of explain things for folks. I've heard folks worried about their current water rights. The in-stream water rights do not take away or impair any legally established right to use the water, having an earlier priority date than the in-stream right. The underline is me there, just trying to explain that. So an in-stream granted today will not affect a older senior water right. An in-stream water right is treated like another water right when it comes to that prior appropriation doctrine. So first in time, first in line. In-stream water rights are also identified as a priority for the public benefit in the 2017 Integrated Water Resource Strategy. I know that Anne has a slide on this and maybe go, able to go into this a little bit more in detail, but ultimately it was a multi-agency, public outreach document that was put together through meetings and trying to understand the in-stream and out-of-stream needs for both Oregon as we move forward with development, commerce and fishing industry. So natural stream flow estimations for our department, the OWRD standard is new in-stream water rights are less than or equal to the natural median stream flow. The median natural stream flow has been estimated for a little over 2,300 basins and the department put out a document in 2002, this Cooper study here, which helped to develop using long-term stream gauge data and regional regression, how to define water availability in different basins around. So what does that look like in practice? So here's an example, so evaluating the requested amount, this Winchester Creek at the mouth, the blue line is the 50% natural stream flow, so that's your median stream flow. In that WAB, which you'll see WAB a lot, we're government, we love our acronyms, but WAB is just water availability basin. And the requested in-stream water right is the yellow line and I apologize if that's a little difficult to see, but that is what's requested in the application. The red line you can see is fitting a little bit more to that blue line and so it's a little left here in the month of April than what was requested based off of the model that tells us what water is available at that 50% exceeded.
Hey Jake?
Yes, sir.
Uh, hey for the record folks, this is Ivan Gahl here in Salem with the Water Resources Department. Uh, I just wanted to point out a couple of things on this plot. Number one, our water availability calculations for the state of Oregon and when we calculate these natural stream flow values, those are done on a monthly basis. So each month of the calendar year has a separate value unless the value is the same for, for consecutive months there. So I wanted to point that out. Another way of looking at the median stream flow or natural stream flow is based on the best available information, in this case for Winchester Creek at the mouth. The median flow is basically like saying, hey, five out of 10 years, we would expect roughly in this case between 45 and 50 cubic feet per second to be available during the month of February. And that's just another way to, to kind of put that in your minds. So I'll stop there Jake.
Yeah, thanks, buddy. So evaluating the requested amount, this is the slide I was referring to earlier to Becky's question regarding notification. So there are 158 new in-stream water right applications submitted in the Rogue, Umpqua and South Coast on November 3rd. They're going to be evaluated whether hydraulically correct basins, which calculate median flows exist for each in-stream water right application. What that means is through that application process, in order for them to get their initial review, which activates the public comment, which activated the email from Mr. Cohannick to you, is they would have to have a WAB in place, so an already established water availability basin. I've highlighted the number 100 here because 100 of those do in fact already have a water, a model that can use a water availability basin. There are 58 that do not. So you can see that there are a number without WABs in the Rogue Basin and I'm, I'll, I'm happy to circle back with Mr. Cohannick and make sure that he didn't do anything in error here, but it's my understanding the reason you didn't get a notification to those was because they're still working on the model for those. Some of these in the Rogue Basin are in Jackson County and Josephine County and as you well know, the South Coast has a significant number, but the Umpqua is carrying the larger load here with the majority of the in-stream application. So this is kind of an idea of what the, the modelers are looking at, that when they talk about a nested WAB, so this is a ODFW in-stream on a Williams Creek, which is a tributary to the North Umpqua. And so when our modeling folks are looking at it, they're looking at how this water is, is available in that sub-basin, but also looking at the broader picture of how much water is available down the system. There are a lot of complexities in that and some of those are, some of that is why it takes so much more time for the ones that don't already have a model in place. So what's the impact of water availability? Once the application receives the initial review, the in-stream water right data are entered into WARS, which is our water availability system. In-stream water right monthly values are subtracted from water availability and water available equals natural stream flow minus in some use minus the in-stream required. So the in-stream water rights from new waterships that were delineated are added to WARS into their larger WAB. So those are the situations where they have to create a WAB and then nest it into the larger picture of water available in the system. So the application process, and I promise I only have four more slides, so I'll get through them as, as quickly as I can here. The application review process is laid out in OAR 690-310, that's general guidance on how we process water right applications, and 690 Division 77, which is more specific to the industry process. The process is similar to any other application. Again, we have the different steps that it moves through. And in-stream water rights can be filed by other state agencies such as DEQ, ODFW, Oregon Parks. So the application's filed, the completeness determination and flow evaluation is done and then you receive an initial review. In this case, 100 of those were done on January 19th yesterday. That began the public comment process. Comments are reviewed, which may take some time. I encourage folks to start the conversation. This is that opportunity to submit some formal comments and, and begin the discussion of what your concerns may be. And then there's the proposed final order after the comments are addressed and that starts a 45-day protest period, which is another option for folks who are, you know, have concerns with a specific water right. And I'll go into that a little more in detail on the next slide. So protest is filed. A settlement will be explored with the parties, in this case the applicant and those who file the protest. If we can't reach an agreement, a contested case hearing may be necessary to get a final order and possibly a certificate. If a settlement is reached, most likely a certificate is issued with the final order. And if there is no protest within the 45-day period, a final order including certificate edition. I have a question slide here, but I would also like to give Anne the opportunity to go through her presentation if, if the Board of Commissioners feels that, that would be the proper process here. And then I also have, I have shared this with Mr. Crockett, but I also have some useful links including where to get, see public notice and where to submit comments.
That path will be fine, thank you. Agreed?
Okay. So if your, your IT wizard would be willing to make Anne Hayden Lesmeister the presenter-
Eric?
It would be greatly appreciated and-
We're going to set you up a guest, sir.
Okay, first I just want to make sure that everybody can hear me.
Good volume, thank you.
Great. Okay. All right. Just a moment here, I had to, I had to my screen lock up a little bit, so I just need to get my PowerPoint pulled back up. But I do want to just thank you for giving us this opportunity to come and address some of the questions that you have. All right, I'm going to share my screen now. Let me know if you're seeing just the PowerPoint presentation.
Perfect.
Okay, wonderful. Well, again, I want to thank you. My name is Anne Hayden Lesmeister and I'm an in-stream flow specialist with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. But of course, as you know, Jeanette Fossera, who is our water policy coordinator, and then Adrian Avery, the water quality and climate program manager are also here to help answer questions. And I'm going to keep this quite brief. I know that you're really interested in getting to the Q and A portion of this and I want to thank Jake for the presentation. And I think that answered a lot of the questions that you may have had. So we'll just jump right in. My slide will advance, there we go. So just a brief reminder of why ODFW files for in-stream water rights and a little bit of background to discuss why we've reinstated doing that in the last few years. So it is the mission of the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to protect and enhance Oregon's fish and wildlife and their habitats, produce and enjoyment by present and future generations. And in-stream water rights is just one of the ways that we do that. So Jake went over kind of the history of in-stream water rights pretty nicely, so like I said, I'll keep this brief. But I do want to note the, the Integrated Water Resources Strategy, which was adopted by the Water Resources Commission. And it states that, you know, in-stream water rights are critical for supporting both healthy ecosystems and, and healthy economies. And one of the fundamental purposes of the document was to better understand and meet Oregon's water needs both in and out of stream. And in doing that, there are several objectives and specific actions that are addressed in that document. And ODFW specifically asked to determine flows to, to support in-stream needs and then to establish additional in-stream water rights where needed to protect flows. And so this process of in-stream water rights applications is part of that. And as Jake noted, this is a document that was put together with tremendous public input and a variety of stakeholder groups. So of course, in-stream water rights are important for fish and other aquatic species and we do need to ensure that water is left in-stream at portions of the year when without in-stream water rights, streams may be dry and in fact are in parts of the state. But there are extended benefits of in-stream water rights that I just want to make sure that we're talking about as well. And those include water quality, cultural values, navigation, climate change resiliency, commercial and recreational fisheries, as well as water and wildlife-based recreation and tourism. And so just a couple of quick slides. This is an ODFW publication that addresses the economic benefits of commercial fisheries. And of course, commercial fisheries are very important for the region there and those commercial fisheries also depend on healthy streams. I won't read the values to you, but I just wanted to put that up there. And then another report that recently came out, actually I think it was just released within the past couple of weeks, addressing the economic benefits of recreation, both statewide but also specifically on the South Coast. And just wanted to point out that it's certainly a major contributor to the economy in that region. And having healthy streams and in-stream water rights helps support that recreational economy as well as other things like commercial recreational fisheries. So like I said, I know you have specific questions. If questions aren't answered here or they come up afterwards, you can always feel free to reach out to me. And so I'll just leave that up for a moment.
Would you like us to do the questions after all, all four or five of you present? Would that be better?
I think they're done.
They're done.
This is, this is all presenting, I believe.
I thought there was one more coming.
No, I believe that's it.
Director Crockett, do you want to?
Sure, I would point you back to the two-page memo that I put together as far as figuring out what questions that you want to ask. I, I, probably the one question that I'm still perplexed about after listening to the presentation is when I look at the public notification on these streams, there's identification of how much water is requested for in-stream use. Under fish life and fish habitat, the numbers exceed what is identified as the estimated average natural flow in some cases. And I would just like somebody to clarify why the request is larger than the estimated average natural flow in the stream for some months. That seems contrary to the presentation.
I can start to address that question. So we do have slightly differing rules in WRD's rules and I'll let you of course, if I say something incorrect, please correct me. They typically do pull the flows back to that estimated natural average flow. However, under our rules, we do use, we have to use habitat-based flows, but we then take those habitat-based flows, which sometimes are greater than the estimated natural average flow in order to meet those species-specific life stage flow needs. And so when we request flows, we request those flows that are sufficient to meet that need for the beneficial uses that ODFW applies for. Those are based on studies and then we pass that through a hydrological filter. And so we are, we can request between 30 to 70% of the average natural flow, or not the average national flow, excuse me, of the hydrologic record or modeled flows. So that is one of the reasons for those differences. And there is an exception when WRD can grant flows higher than that, but we do make it a point to apply for the flows that are needed for the species in those reaches that we're applying.
Ms. Les-
Commissioners, I'd like to add just a pinch to that if you don't mind.
Certainly.
So our flows are based on habitat models and they are for the species that are present within those streams. And keep in mind that the water resources model, because water gets there half of the time and fish need water more than half the time, which is something I find I'm saying, but you think of these life histories of these species and some of them are entrapped with water after seven years and then they go out to the ocean and they come back. So they need water, you know, available to them year-round and more than half of the time for their, their survivability. So that's why, that's why they're different, I think.
Thank you. Ms. Les, mister, one of your slides there, they're on the extended benefits of the in-stream water rights, started off with water quality and then navigation. Could you give us just a little detail on that, what that's referencing, the navigation portion? I think it was five lists there. I don't know if you can go back to that slide, not necessary, but curious on that one.
I think if I, I think I've stopped sharing my slides, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, I can pull those back up if you like. So that slide, you know, is specific to basically all in-stream water rights. And so certainly in, in rivers where navigation and commerce are common and that having water in streams is beneficial use for that. And also to support, as we said, the commercial and economic fisheries. And so this was just kind of a general listing, not necessarily that, that full list that I started out with, not necessarily specific to Curry County's economic situation.
Okay. But is it for the fish to navigate or, you know, when, when we hear that word down here, it means either in a drift boat or a motorized boat or, you know, is it accessible by waiting across? Can you navigate from one side to the other? Not, not a big deal.
Yes, you're right. That was referring to transportation and navigation in, in watercraft.
Okay. Thank you again.
I have some more questions if, if I may.
Certainly.
I would add that it's important for fish to navigate as well. You know, our, our flows that we recommend include flows under maintaining passes throughout the system for fish to go upstream and downstream. So different concept, but also included.
Pretty close, thank you.
So I would like to hear from Water Resources on- So I would like to hear from Water Resources on what their, their thoughts are in regards to ODFW proposing some in-stream water allocations that are higher than what Water Resources has identified as the estimated natural flow.
Thanks, Becky. I'll take that one. This is Ivan Gollum here in Salem again. As Ann and Jeanette pointed out, ODFW has different rules and frankly, different goals in Oregon than the Water Resources Department. You know, traditionally, we were set up to be an allocation-type agency. And then, as time went on, it became more important to understand the value of in-stream flows. So from our perspective, it's perfectly fine that they apply for more water than those median natural flow values that are there. Our rules in place don't allow us to give out any more water than those median natural flows. So our rules effectively cap what we're able to issue through the allocation process for those in-stream water rights. Does that answer the question?
Yes, yes, thank you. I have a couple of other questions.
Certainly.
Okay, this is in regards to ODFW, I believe. I guess the big question I have is where is the justification? I know you showed a plan, the 2017, 2017 plan, but where's the justification for the proposed limitations that the in-stream rights would impose to further development and economic opportunities in Curry County? I'm asking if ODFW balances their proposal with the impacts that we would see happen in Curry County in regards to potentially thwarting development?
Well, I would start by saying that we certainly understand that those are very real concerns, and we do try to balance that. But we are also operating under our agency's mission and rules, and one of the state's policies is to prevent the depletion of native species. And in-stream water rights is a tool that we can use to, to meet that objective. So, and again, there are many in-stream water right benefits that I think are important for the region as well, that are supported by healthy streams and having water in streams.
Becky, members of the Board of Commissioners there, this is Ivan Gollum again with the Water Resources Department. You know, I would, I would add, if we step back a little bit and look at the broader water law context here in Oregon, one of the very foundations of Oregon water law is you put that water to use or you're going to lose it. You know, water rights here in Oregon are subject to forfeiture after five consecutive years of non-use. And, and that was set up so that people who were ready, willing, and able to take the water and put it to use could grab that water and develop these economic benefits to the local communities there. So it's a use it or lose it type of a scenario. Our system doesn't view ODFW, their in-stream water right applications, any differently than a new applicant coming in and applying for all of the remaining water on a particular stream in that basin for some new consumptive use that may or may not provide some economic benefit to the county there. We're fairly neutral in that respect, that we're just going to process the in-stream water right, water right as we would process an application for new consumptive uses there. And so, again, I think those kind of help set that broader context of how the legislature back in 1987 tried to fit in this idea of protection for in-stream water rights into something that was already 80 years old, the Water Code, of a first-in-time, first-in-right priority date system there.
So another question I have is from, probably best addressed from ODFW, is do you have any supportive documentation that would show the injury that could happen to fish if you did not do these in-stream water right application?
That's got to be an ODFW.
Yeah, ODFW, thanks.
So many of the species are listed as sensitive or, you know, under the Endangered Species Act. And so certainly, we do have a responsibility to ensure that these management objectives are meeting the needs of those species in, in this area. And I'll let, I think, Jeanette or Adrian, would you like to chime in a little bit there?
Yeah, I was, you know, in addition to having many listed species and limiting factors or opting water and habitat within the freshwater system, I would probably defer to the, the recent multi-coastal species plan. And I don't know the details of that plan, and I apologize for that, but we can find some documentation and refer you to that and send that to you after the meeting.
Well, specifically, let's look at one of the basins. Let's look at the Winchuck River, for example. What data is out there that would cause you to believe that without these in-stream water right applications, that those fish are going to suffer? They seem to be doing pretty good right now.
I think it would probably be better to address some of these questions to our district biologists. And so certainly, like I said, continue to reach out, and I'm happy to provide more specifics. But this, these kind of basin-specific questions are not likely, it would be better to address those with our district biologists as well.
Well, I appreciate that. Go ahead.
I was just going to add, I can't speak specifically to the Winchuck, but if we keep in mind that, you know, most of our systems in Oregon have a species that's listed under the Endangered Species Act, and their habitat is, is already impaired, the target flows that we identify are in-stream water right applications, are what we've identified as their minimum need to survive and, and reproduce and hopefully enhance the population and get them off the, off the Endangered Species Act. So we're looking at, you know, recovering these species and providing the habitat so they can thrive, rather than just cut ahead and leaving a lot of them under the across the state.
Right. And I appreciate that, but your application is, is river, river-specific. It's reach and river-specific. So it seems like if you're making the application that you need that water, then there should be corresponding information that shows that those fish in those reaches are currently being harmed. And when somebody wants to protest an action that occurs, let's say you're successful and Water Resources approves one of these, these applications, anybody that wants to protest them has to pay $800 per stream reach and then go into a process of coming up with a scientific information to justify that that action may not be the right action to take. And it seems like before you make an application, you should have the scientific justification per stream reach that says, this reach will be harmed unless we make this application for more in-stream rights. So I'm asking where that information comes from. It seems like you just did a generic wand across, you know, the, the areas in, in Curry County and said, well, these look good. I'm going to take the in-stream rights for the Winchuck and the Checkco and the Rogue, and there we go. We've got all the water.
Sixes?
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't see Elk. Is Elk, was Elk River included?
Yeah, it's all parts of the South Coast.
Why now?
Commissioner Pash?
Actually, Ms. Crockett just asked the exact question I was going to ask. So how do you?
So, you know, I, I serve on the Association of Oregon County Board of Directors, and I think one or two of you, within the last year, when we, pre-COVID, the, the time there, on one of, one of, one or two of the meetings, we had good information. And the recent sendout of the 100-year Oregon Water Plan, as you probably recall, that put Oregon rural sections and counties and areas way back on their heels because of what Director Crockett just communicated there. You know, not enough scientific justification for really battling the impacts that it would have on rural Oregon, not just ranchers and farmers, but recreation and, and all the above. And so I was really happy to hear her bring up the development part of, of this concern for rural Oregon, the divide, the gap that increases between rural and metro. And it's such a deep subject, no pun intended, but when you look at the housing, the drastic need of housing that we are, we are suffering in, especially this part of Oregon, but a lot of essentially the entire state, to not be able to develop without water is, is a tremendous challenge that, that, again, has a lot of people recoiling a little bit and deeply concerned. So I don't, I didn't mean to make that a comment form instead of a question, but I'm sure you're getting this from areas outside of the, you know, the, the three larger metropolitan counties. Does anybody want to take that on? Just comment? Thank you.
Again, this is Ivan Gollum with the Water Resources Department.
All right.
Go ahead. I was, I was just going to say that, you know, for clarification, the filings from ODFW for these in-stream water rights, these are not going to add more water into the streams and rivers. The attempt is basically to protect some or all of the remaining water in these various stream reaches where the applications were filed. And I've had the luxury of working all across Oregon for over 20 years in the water business here. And almost without fail, every stream in Oregon is deficient in water during the summer months, if not other months of the year. My agency has done an outstanding job in the first 100 years of our business, doing fully allocating or over allocating these surface water bodies to the out-of-stream consumptive users. So ODFW is doing what they can, under their mission, under their goals for their agency, to protect remaining flows in those streams for fish. DEQ does it for water quality considerations. And then Oregon Parks and Rec would do it for recreational activities there. So I certainly understand the concerns of the Commissioner, but again, there isn't going to be any kind of an add-back to surface water flows from the filings of these applications. And at some point, Becky, when it's appropriate, I've, I've got some information in, from your memo, you talked about well locations within a half a mile. I'd like to comment on that as well.
That, that would be very good. That was kind of the way I was headed next, next question. So Director Crockett?
Actually, I really appreciate that, that you brought it up, because that's directly from Mary Ann Cooper, from the attorney from the Oregon Farm Bureau. Her experience is working with other basins where in-stream rights have been claimed by ODFW, and in fact, it caused people not to be able to get water within a half a mile of a stream. So that's a real example in the state of Oregon. So I would like your opinion on what that's all about.
Yeah, I'd be glad to comment on that. So keep in mind, here in Oregon, there's two types of groundwater uses. The first one is going to be exempt groundwater uses, which are traditionally the wells that are drilled for residential homes, small businesses, stock water wells, small commercial operations. And Oregon water law has a number of exempt groundwater uses where you're able to drill a well, and you don't need to file for a water right to use those exempt amounts of groundwater use. So the in-stream water right applications, certificates once issued, will have zero impact on those exempt uses. And frankly, for Curry County and most of the South Coast, there's very little groundwater development going on because unfortunately, there's very little groundwater to develop. With rare exceptions where we've got pretty coarse sands and gravels and decent aquifer thicknesses, most landowners are happy to get those exempt amounts of groundwater where it's available from a drilled well there. So again, exempt uses, which are going to provide water for homes, small businesses, small commercial operations, stock water, these in-stream water rights don't have any impact on that at all. In the event that someone was lucky enough to drill a good producing well, and they wanted to get an irrigation right from that well, or a large commercial right, or industrial right, they would have to file an application for a new groundwater permit. And that application, as these in-stream water right applications goes through a number of different review processes here at our agency, one of those review processes is to determine the amount of hydraulic connection and impact from the proposed groundwater use on nearby surface water bodies like streams and rivers. And because of today's water availability, and what we call our Division Nine rules that kind of outline how we do that review between surface water and groundwater, any wells that are hydraulically connected to surface water and within a mile of surface water get evaluated for kind of the degree of hydraulic connection and the degree of impact. And I don't want to go into the details, but the half-mile isn't really a thing, if you will. Division Nine talks about, there's a quarter-mile limitation and then a mile limitation on that. So, but the in-stream water right applications aren't going to have a significant impact on those. There is part of the review process where the amount that someone applies for on a new groundwater permit gets compared to a number of different flow values. And one of those flow values is any in-stream water rights in that particular region. And so that's where a new in-stream water right could have a potential impact on groundwater availability for someone who is seeking a new groundwater right. But there's, there's any number of different combinations that we could talk about there, so I will go into them.
In Curry County, we have a lot of people that talk about their well as a cistern. And we assume that that is really taking surface water, you know, from what would otherwise be an in-stream right. So that's why we're concerned. I mean, these cistern wells are located close to a stream. So if there's no water availability, then these cisterns that people are developing seem to be a problem.
Yes, if, if the water master makes a determination that a landowner's source of water is surface water, so it could be a cistern that has surface water flowing into it, or it might be surface water that's piped into it from a stream. Oftentimes, springs and seeps are developed on the South Coast. Again, because the groundwater resources are so sparse over there, a lot of folks have tried to drill wells and can't find much well yield, or don't have the money to drill wells. They develop these wet spots in the ground. And if those are determined to be tributary to surface water, those would require a surface water right in order to, to be a legitimate authorized use of that domestic water there.
So if all of the water is allocated to ODFW for the in-stream rights, and somebody comes along and they want, they have a cistern, or they want to develop a cistern, essentially that would be junior to the in-stream right. And if the in-stream rights are all taken, can Water Resources even issue a right for that cistern?
That's a good question. So generally, if there's no water available for new consumptive uses, the department is not able to issue new water rights in most situations. There have been instances where landowners have been able to make the case that there are no other alternatives for water. Trucking water is not a viable source. Drilled wells are not a viable source. Hooking up to neighbors' wells isn't an option. And in limited circumstances like that, I believe the department has issued what we call human consumption rights for residents like that. for residents like that. If that's a concern for Curry County, and I think it is, and I think it's a legitimate concern, those are the type of comments, I think, that would be helpful to the Water Resources Department to get submitted in response to these in-stream water rights. And I don't know that you necessarily need to send in the same comment for each of the filed in-stream water rights. It would probably be sufficient to send in one letter from Curry County that outlines the various concerns and maybe references on the most recent number of filings there in Curry County.
Very helpful.
And I would also...
Please go ahead, Ms. Leichtmeister.
Thanks. I just wanted to address one thing that seems to be coming up here. And that's that the amount of appropriation for out-of-stream uses is not a factor in determining our in-stream water rights because they're based on natural stream flow. So one thing that I did want to point out here is that in Curry County right now, for the four where the initial reviews have been completed, so for those four during the months where ODFW is applying for an in-stream water right, there is only one of those streams right now where water is actually available for out-of-stream requests during any of the months that ODFW applied for. So three of those rivers that already there's not water available according to the WARS, W.R.D.'s WARS database. And so we do, even though those in-stream water rights may not really translate into more water being on the stream presently, those are goals. And they help agencies and other partners in stream restoration efforts.
Thank you.
There's another issue that I'd like to address. This would be an appropriate time to do it. But regarding, you know, the migration of channels due to high-flow events, there was concern that P.O.D.s could be affected by the in-stream water rights due to, you know, a large water event pushing a channel. There is a statute 545-10 that addresses, it's loosely called chasing water by the water masters, but it basically allows for you to move your pump to encounter water should there be such an event, as long as you're not leapfrogging other points of diversion. So I just wanted to put that one out there as well.
Okay. Certainly.
Okay, just a little bit of a clarification on the rogue system. You said those weren't out for public comment yet. Is that true? Did I understand that correct?
The audio was a little rough there, but I think you're asking about them being available for public comment. There are 100 that went out for public comment on the 19th. And the other ones are still in that initial review phase where they're creating the model so that they can see what estimated natural stream flow is there. That answers your question?
Yeah, I think it did. Yeah, I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Jones, anyone can answer this, but just give us a sequence if you could. You know, Oregon Water Resources down to water rights. Where does the watershed councils fit in? Does it, what's the national effect on, you know, the state of Oregon and the connections there? You know, just like we have the U.S. fishing game connected with, in some ways, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. What's the, where does it start and generally those different departments blend in? Okay, so Oregon Water Resources. Give me the structure there, that, the chart below you.
Sure, so, sure, Commissioner, you mentioned watershed councils. So watershed councils are generally localized nonprofit groups that will reach out to different state and federal entities to solicit grant funding for, say, a riparian habitat project or maybe some efficiencies on some irrigation equipment. You know, that's generally how the watershed councils will operate. There are also soil and water conservation districts that get their funding. I believe their, like, sub-houses under USDA gives them money as well that will also do irrigation efficiency projects. The Oregon Water Resources Department is one of a little over 50, I believe 50 state agencies. And we have our water masters, which loosely get referred to as county water masters, that many of their districts align with county geography. But we are a state agency funded by general fund dollars primarily. And that's about where we sit. ODFW being a sister agency also funded through the state. So we will work cooperatively with watershed councils. Sometimes we'll offer support for one of their grant projects, that kind of thing. And I believe ODFW gets involved as well when there's efficiencies or fish streams or fish bypasses as part of maybe a dam renovation. I'm happy to let anybody else jump in, though, if I didn't answer your question or if you'd like to.
No, it's very helpful. You said 50 departments, though, under Oregon Water Resources Department?
No, under the state of Oregon.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, state agencies, there's a little over 50.
I couldn't even name a couple, so I didn't think that was right. I appreciate that, though, very much. Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
Well, I was going to just go up above our agency to the federal government. You know, there's quite a bit of federal case law out there where the state is actually responsible across the country for management of water. So federal agencies typically have to defer to state water law for management purposes. Here in Oregon, we have large projects built and operated by the Bureau of Reclamation and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Corps of Engineers typically has built dams. Good examples, the Willamette System for flood control purposes. Bureau of Reclamation has typically built water storage facilities for irrigation purposes. And there's some crossover in some areas, as in here in the Willamette as an example. But ultimately, the day-to-day water allocation and water management falls on our agency, the Water Resources Department here in Oregon. And that holds true for most of the rest of the country.
Very good.
I just want to thank all you guys on the screen. This is a difficult place to have the conversation like this because it's a hard issue to discuss. But I think you guys did an excellent job. Wouldn't you agree? They answered our questions and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
The old timers used to say, "Many thanks." And to have five of you join in with us, very helpful, very informative. And come down here and visit sometime if you haven't been lately. Beautiful area. Thank you again.
You bet. Thank you.
Very...
Thank you for having us.
Excellent job.
See you here.
Bye now. Bye. So, I thought if we take five minutes before we go to our next workshop. Did you want to conclude with anything? I might even have a couple of questions for you, if it's okay. More discussion is in order.
I think that the board should consider writing a letter.
Just hold that and mic up.
Yeah, Mr. Gaul recommended identifying and outlining the Curry County concerns, maybe even somewhat specifically. Is that where you're going?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about this issue, but it will impact people that, you know, want to drill wells that are close to a stream. It will impact them. It will impact the farmers that are looking to, you know, expand their water rights or move their existing points of diversion. That's what he was talking about at the end. Pardon me?
Cranberry growers.
Definitely the cranberry growers. And I don't know where the city of Brookings is in regards to any potential increase in the water allocation on the Chetco. I know they've looked at more storage options, but I haven't had a chance to talk to them about what's going on right here. And this is one of those issues that it's so difficult to grasp what is going to happen as a result. And yet, it's so easy for these agencies, quite frankly, to just come in and they feel they have the right and the need to protect something that may not need extra protection. And the result is that there is a real impact. There is a real economic impact to people.
Makes me nervous.
It makes me nervous. And to protest the action...
And if you read the Hundred Year Water Plan, you'll really be nervous.
Yeah, well, it is concerning because it literally will cut people off in the future. And there's no question. So, yeah, I would suggest a letter from the Board of Commissioners in response to what's being proposed is probably a good idea.
Can you, go ahead.
I just, one of the things that bothered me is they wouldn't really define the difference between a spring and surface water, water runoff.
They're the same thing. They're surface water. That's why anybody near a stream that is trying to tap into that stream as a water source, and that happens a lot in Curry County. And what was identified here is that we really don't have groundwater. We have surface water. And surface water is what they're talking about, allocating all of the rest of it to fish. And, you know, we all support fish. There's no question about that. But, you know, is, do you want to support people also?
Problem is, the requirements down here in rural Oregon aren't the same as the people that are going to vote on this in big cities.
Yeah, that's correct.
They don't know what we need down here.
Yeah.
Mr. Herzog?
I was just going to add, you know, I would rather ODFW concentrate on getting the fish hatchery below the Lost River, you know, Lost Creek Dam. That fish hatchery operating, instead of worrying about the Windchuck, the Chetco, Sixes River, Elk River, the Rogue River needs help. Elk River's got a fish hatchery, but we, I, it doesn't, I don't like it when they start coming in and saying, and I just wonder, why now? Why now do they want rights to our streams? I mean, they have rights. I mean, I've grown up here and I've helped, I've helped ODFW go gather salmon and trout even in the, and cutthroat and done all that where you go put a net out. And they've always had, seemed like, rights to do that. And, but this is, this is taking control where we, I don't want them to.
And in compounding is the climate change issue. Whether you agree or not, I mean, that is getting a lot of political momentum throughout the state, throughout the country. And as Mr. Pasha said, that's where the metropolitan people come in. And they're really not aware, it's not that they're just indifferent, but they're not aware of what we are dealing with in the rural areas. And I'm so glad you brought up development. And I don't know, you know, not very many irresponsible developers out there, but water is so key. And management of it is something that we can contribute to. I'm wondering, you had one of your recommended discussion items here of five. And I don't think they answered this, but maybe you want to respond. Understand justification for proposed limitations that ISWRs would impose to further development and economic opportunities in Curry County. And we're repeating that question, but it needs to be repeated, I think.
Yeah, and I think they touched on it, but the reality is, it gets back to, do we have groundwater availability or do we have surface water that people are really tapping into when they ask for a water right to develop their property? It's surface, it's surface water that people are taking. It's very rare that it's groundwater that they're asking to get a water right for. So...
That's easier for them to control, the surface water is.
Well, the surface water is what we're talking about as far as, yeah, ODFW is going to take it.
So could you, I hate to ask, but you, could one of you, you or one of your staff give us a draft on that?
Absolutely.
Would you do that?
I would love to, yes.
And identifying, you know, the diversity that we have in Curry County when it comes to agriculture and the different population sections and, you know, the cities and outlying areas, all the above. I, you know, you might try, I'd recommend considering recapturing that a little bit with, you know, that diversity. And yet, there's a common denominator there, and that's, everybody needs water.
The other thing I would mention is, this is not happening just in Curry County. Their proposal is for Coos County and Douglas County as well. So it probably behooves the commissioners to coordinate with those counties as well. I understand that they're not real happy about this either.
Well, you've done a terrific job here. And you're right, they're not, they're, as Commissioner Herzog said, we're all pretty nervous and we're going to have pushback and we're going to have to go beyond just working with the governor and the legislature. Definitely. Thank you again. So we'll close this workshop, take a five to 10-minute break. Be back here before 3:15. Oh, we're going to run out of time for the next workshop? Let's see, we have a 3:30? What's that? We have a 3:30, right?
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock.
Okay, not, okay.
3:30 we already did.
That's right, thank you. So let's be back here at...
So it's 20 minutes on the...
I think that'll be fine. Let's get everybody back here at 3:15. Thank you. Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the, the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there? And how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we as a board have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression. And recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire, prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources. And as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Murv George Jr. and I'm the Forest Supervisor for the Rogue River Siskiess National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm gonna focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the Fire Chief of Jackson County Fire District Three in Southern Oregon.
3:15, welcome back. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, second part of our, uh, Curry County Commissioner, uh, Workshop Projects, Unpacking the Need for Grant Writing. Summer Madison, Economic Development Coordinator.
Good afternoon.
Good welcome.
Thanks. This is not a presentation, just a conversation. So, uh, you know, we, uh, we talk a lot about the need for a grant writer. And we have some pretty big projects that we don't get funded because we don't have that resource. And I've got to say, our department heads do a really great job in maintaining the grants they're able to make time for. Uh, but if you review the strategic plan for the county and you look at that with the vision of a grant writer, do you have a copy of that?
No ma'am.
Okay.
I will get a copy.
Between the vision, mission, and values and then, uh, the strategic goals, uh, fiscal responsibility really highlights the need for a grant writer. And we actually call that out specifically in the strategic plan. So I think it's important that we revisit that strategic plan on a regular basis. It's a five-year plan. Need to kind of chart where we are and how much further we need to go to get to where we said we would be. Uh, that's part of the transparency in that plan. So, we, with the help of the Finance Department, we dissected, uh, the grants that we have on file, probably for the past 10, 12 years. And they broke down to these simple categories. Um, and when you take a look at those, uh, really the emphasis is on public safety, uh, social services, and community development.
Say those again, please, do you mind?
Public safety, social services, community development.
Thank you.
And so when I say social services, that's not, uh, what your initial inclination to think is as far as state services go. But that's, uh, in all honesty, most of the services that we provide. Okay. And I'm sure there's a ton of little niches that are left out of here, but this is the overall. Um, so I'm gonna actually minimize this and, oh, did I, how do I, oh, just end it now. Because what I'm gonna do is show you what this is. I made you all copies, but I wanted a, a, um, PowerPoint for the record and for Mr. Barnes. So, uh, I came up with a list of questions last week. I want to know what other counties are doing. I think part of the blessing in living in a rural area is that we have many other like counties. And so what are they doing? You know, what are, what are they not doing? What's working, what's not? Saves us a lot of time and money. So we put some questions out there, sent them to Commissioner Boyce, and he got ahold of 17 counties in the state, which is about half of our counties, and proposed some questions. Uh, do you have a grant writer or a grant program manager? Are they on staff or are they contracted? How is it budgeted? TLT, general fund, administrative fees? Overall, have you found it to be a financial gain or loss? Is it department-specific or general county service? And do you utilize a software platform for grant management? So we got, uh, two full pages of answers from a, a few counties and you can read-
I got two more this morning, by the way.
Yeah, we, yeah, they continue to come in. I'm grateful for that.
Yeah.
What we did tell our partner counties was whatever's disseminated here, and we pulled together, we'll turn right back around and we're going to share that with you because as you read through the details, you'll see so many of them are in the same boat as us. So maybe we're taking the lead in the conversation and maybe that gives us the opportunity to collaborate on a, a grander scale. So, uh, all of the details are here with our answers and some of them didn't give specific answers, but did make statements. So you'll find that those are, uh, detailed out here in, in the back. Miranda was kind enough to do us a little pie chart because sometimes we like visuals. And so you'll see on the front, all that data is, is broken down and that input's broken down. Are they exploring getting a grant writer? Are they a full-time staff grant writer? Do they contract? Kind of helps us check the polls on, you know, what everybody else is doing. Some of the feedback they give on some of the questions is really great. So I'd certainly encourage you to, to read those and our department heads. Okay. So I'm just gonna go back because that's all this is, is just the data on the paper.
Can you scroll down just a little bit, see on the, the contracted one there? It looks like it's about, not 20%, but 15 maybe? 12, excuse me, okay. Good.
So when you say like grant writer is a combined role, it's not that person's only job? Or maybe they're a department head and so they do grant writing in a, in addition to their regular duties? Um, and sometimes they're, um, they're, they're shared. So it's, it's just very interesting what's working for everybody and what's not. And it will be, be nice to look and say, hey, that might work for us. So I'm going to go ahead and minimize this. And we're going to go to another file I thought I had on here.
While you're looking there, uh, I didn't contact the AOC District Four counties. I will at some point. Uh, but I'd also add, um, your comment, um, kind of your long-term vision to let them know our findings. There, there's at least 10 counties out there that are very interested in that and, and, uh, you know, good, good way to proceed.
Okay, so coming back to this document, um, what I did after I itemized or categorized, uh, the, the grants that we typically see being applied for, um, I went into the contracting, outsourcing, and staffing of grants. So based on the feedback from our counties, I'm looking at, um, how that might apply to us with those different positions. So what I detailed here is, is just a grant writer and kind of gave a brief expla- explanation of what that looks like. And, um, that's not hard and steadfast. Of course, that can be combined from anything, but just an idea. So I research, draft, and submit proposals that help organizations or individuals receive grant funding to be eligible for funding. An organization or individual must have an objective that lines with the grant specifications. As of January 2021, the average hourly pay for a grant writer in the United States is $24.45 an hour. ZipRecruiter is seeing hourly wages as high as $100 and as low as $20 an hour. The majority of grant writer wages currently range between 1947 and 2861 across the United States. So I didn't run, um, hard numbers on what that would look like as a county employee. But you can envision that, you know, that, that might be, you know, on the low range of, uh, an employee, but that certainly wouldn't be the total cost. We, we definitely look at maybe doubling that if somebody was an employee here at the county. And then contingency fees or percentage fees are commission-based payments issued to professionals only if there is a favorable result from their work. In the case of grant writing, it means that a grant writer is paid based on a percentage of the grant awarded. The average grant writer salary cost, benefits included, is $48,863. So I find that interesting because that's, uh, that's based on, you know, output and production. They really have to work to get paid for that. And so it's just not a, kind of a, a hobby project, you know, they, they want to make some money from that. So-
Forty-eight thousand years, forty-nine thousand is, uh, that is per year, correct?
Yeah.
Sure.
For grant, grant writer.
Benefits included.
That does not include the benefits.
Okay, it says benefits included there.
Does it?
Yes, it does.
Oh, my, my apologies.
That's okay.
That is, the other one is not.
Okay.
Just want to pop. Okay.
So the forty-nine thousand does not include benefits? Misprint? No worries.
No, that's not a misprint. I, I copied that from the state.
That gives a good perspective though, very helpful.
Yeah, I thought so. So then this is the grant program manager and director perspective. So they're also known as award managers or budgets and grants managers. Grants managers are tasked with planning and implementing grant programs, preparing budgets, research funding opportunities, supervising grant staff, monitoring expenditures, identifying support agencies, tracking results, and analyzing financial data. The average salary for the role of a grants program manager in the United States is $62,400. So kind of looking at some of the tasks in those job descriptions, in my opinion, I feel like there's a few from both that the county could, uh, potentially benefit from. It's not just a one or the other. So I find that interesting. Okay. So here's another option that I wanted to bring to the table. Um, county-supported grant writing. So as of, as of now, our department heads or our departments are independently responsible for writing their grants. And, uh, that goes okay until they find out about a grant and they have two days to write it and they're, they're a department of two. And so more often than not, either they'll breeze through it and they won't get the funding, or they just won't apply. So, uh, one of the key things I thought was really helpful with a grant program manager is that they, they maintain a schedule and a calendar. So you know the, the grants that come up quarterly, annually, biannually, one-time grants, uh, what departments might be most eligible, which is helpful because maybe a gr- a grant program manager would also help us bounce those opportunities off other jurisdictions or nonprofits so that we are complementing one another's work and not, um, competing. Uh, so, look this up, SWAP offers a total of four grant writing courses. Um, I wanted to provide this one because this may be an option that you find interesting. Basically, it's a six-week program. There's three courses here. Each one is six weeks. Each one is $100. And each one kind of steps you up into the level of grant writing. And, um, for a total investment of $10,000, $500 per department, 20 departments, $10,000, we may want to look at a professional development program like this and then develop a part-time position or something like that, either hired a staff or contracted out based on what we provide for county staff. In my opinion, um, your department heads know more about the needs of their community and their staff and their equipment than, you know, a grant writer will. So there's gotta be some kind of mirror and partnership there where we could really make something work. Anyway, so this course is the six-week course. It's the basics, the A to Z's, you know, I know nothing. Here's where I'm gonna learn what the heck grant writing's really about. And then, uh, this one's advanced gra- grant proposal writing. So this kind of gets a little deeper into the nitty-gritty and the, the body of, of grants and what really is gonna help you, um, complete it efficiently. The third one is just like the powerhouse of, um, you're here. Now, this is how you can do it better than anybody else, kind of a thing, and really find success and see those success rates go up. In some of the, uh, job descriptions that I was researching and positions in Oregon, um, they're seeing anywhere from a 73 to a 96% uh, success rate for the top 100 grant writers in Oregon. Seventy-three to 96. So-
Say that one more time, please.
Seventy-three to 96% success rate for the top 100 grant writers in Oregon.
Okay.
So I found that interesting. So then I started looking at their qualifications and a lot of it, a lot of it mirrors with, um, what's in our strategic plan and, and some of the grants that we're already looking to fulfill. So if we can look at those, uh, strengths that we currently have at the county and the weaknesses and the gaps that we need to fill and kind of start, uh, modeling a plan, I think that you might be able to consider what kind of grant position you want to fill. And maybe the larger over, you know, overarching contracts for grants are something that we contract out. I just wanted to bring the discussion because I know it's been brought up many times. And I don't want you to be in a position where it's a yes or a no, but it's a how are we going to make this work? Because it is in our strategic plan. So we owe it to the plan and the citizens to really talk about it.
You know, it's been, it's been a little bit of a source of frustration because we've, we've missed some key funds available, uh, that we could, could have qualified for. And, um, you know, I think I, first I believe I hear you saying we could, it's only a 24-hour course over a six-week period?
Mm-hmm.
That's like one day a week, uh, four hours a day, something like that.
So-
Um, but it doesn't give the total cost?
It's $100 per course, per six-week course. I did put it in here, I think. Yeah, here we go. So 20 departments at $500 and really it's 300, but what I did factor in is a $33 an hour offset if somebody was not willing to do that on their personal time. So there's some leverage in there. But think about that, a $10 investment, $10,000 investment to have 20 employees in this county prepared and, and ready to write grants. Not saying they have the time to, but it sure would take a lot less time if they had the skills and they were equipped to do it efficiently. Also, the cost of a grant writer compared to the $10,000, that's a drop in the bucket. Literally in six months, we have some very qualified people on staff. And maybe from there, you figure out what kind of grant writer you want.
Would there be, what would be the, the, just off the top of your head, the incentive for employees to get that training and, uh, and then follow through?
The incentive, well-
I mean, we have people that want to produce for their department, certainly.
Mm-hmm.
And you, but you, you wisely mentioned time, you know, time allowed and how that could all fit in, but that, that's very interesting there.
So could you repeat that question, Commissioner?
Just, uh, just an incentive to, uh, to want to take that course because that's, yeah, that's no small commitment, uh, even the, just the 24-hour.
You're, you're absolutely right. That's a, a, a great thought. I've got to tell you that the more that we invest in the professional development of our employees, the more loyal and long-term they will be. And this is a, a, a great example of having faith in the staff that you've hired and believing in them. Uh, and, and let's just think about it. Maybe they take this course and we invest 300, $400, $500 into them. And they decide, you know, I'm, I'm really gonna go work for this nonprofit. Chances are pretty good that nonprofit's still gonna- Chances are pretty good that nonprofit's still going to be in the county. It's still going to benefit us in one way or another.
Well said. Well said. Do we take public comment in workshop?
You have it on the agenda.
Is it?
Yes.
Yep.
Very good, Mr. Barnes.
Just on this one specific point, there was a screen up here before you talk about incentive. You give your employees 2% of any grants they get, they take in. You know, 3%, 5%, up to X number of dollars. That's an incentive. You know, if you go out and you apply for a $100,000 grant, you're going to get two grand if you get this grant. That's an incentive, you know? I mean, there's, I don't know that we have, you know, that we have to give it out to... I've listened to this and I understand. Brad, do you know how many grants we have and what departments? That's the first issue that you really need to look at is how many grants the county has and which departments have which grants for which amount of money, what the compliance rate is on those grants. Before you start hiring more people to writing more grants, really need to understand everything. And that's, that's a job of like Summer said, a grant manager or a program manager. You need somebody, whether it would be you're a director of something or somebody needs to be in charge of all these different grants that all the different county departments get because you're on the hook for them if they go bad. So it's really something that you should consider. But then, like I said, it's an incentive, you know? If you give people 2% of the grants that they get, that's a big incentive to get employees out there because they don't get bonuses working for the county otherwise. Thank you.
Yeah, 2018, that was a big issue with Commissioner Huxley and then why we almost lost the $1.6 million Head Start Program bookings because we were not managing that well. So in fairness to him, that was definitely an issue. As far as incentive goes, if you pay for the training and give them the encouragement, you know, people do generally respond very well to training and appreciative of that and they want to be productive, so that's a very good point. As far as percentage goes, I wouldn't argue with that, you know, at least initially. If it helps their department and helps the county in general, I think they're going to, most people would take the lead in that. Commissioner Pass?
I also think if we can get three or four, even three or four people to train and for writing grants. You know, initially to get started, they all work together to get, you know, go after a specific grant and they help each other along in the process. That's how you learn to produce, so it'd be, it'd be kind of fun. I'd actually probably want to get involved in doing that and I'd pay for my own part of it if we got other people to do it with me. I'd do that.
24 hours. Excuse me, Commissioner Huxley?
It's okay.
I was just wondering, Summer, could we poll the departments to say, you know, what are your thoughts on, would you be interested in taking a class for 24 hours? It'd be actually 24 times three, you know?
I think engaging your department heads in that conversation speaks volumes.
Yeah, so, I mean, if the board agrees, poll them and a little survey or something or what do you think? And...
Yes, sir.
I think the first thing to do though would be, as Mr. Barnes said, you know, find out what departments draw and, you know, fill out for grants, what grants we have out there, where we file for those grants on an annual basis, on a biannual basis, and go to those department heads first. And that's where you can, I think, draw from initially. Identifying the grants that we need are the, is the first step.
So the treasurer historically or just recently has been tracking and monitoring. And that's kind of, it's kind of bounced from person to person. In 2014, there really wasn't that person. And that was actually one of the first tasks that I had when I started with the county was figure out what grants we have. And boy, howdy, that was a quick way to figure out what we're really doing, you know, is what we were getting funding for. And then the finance director took that over. I think county council at some point's taken that over. I think Director of Operations tried to and now it's back at treasurer. So it's difficult too because there's not a real, you know, a dark line that says this is a grant. But there are some that are renewable without deliverables, you know, one and done. There are contracts for open-ended funding. And so probably identifying those different categories of funding that we receive would be helpful too. But I got to tell you, we already received so much in grants. And it's incredible to me that every department, I couldn't, there was only 21 departments that I noted on our internal phone list. And the only department that I didn't specify as eligible for this was the surveyor because we contract that out.
So I have two primary questions so far. Existing grant management, that's what we have in inventory right now, then pulling the departments. What else do you want to add to that? What was the key departments that we would want to focus on to start with if we went this direction?
Well, maybe you could ask the departments too, you know, especially those folks that have been here a while and so they have a real good history of what's worked and not. You know, maybe going through those positions or reading those material and highlighting, yeah, we would like this kind of support. We're not so efficient here, but we're okay here. And maybe kind of pulling that information in to help you form, you know, more of an idea of what you're looking for.
So we could have some fun with this and catch up.
I think so.
Which we've been wanting to do for a long time.
I know I have staff that would be very excited. She really wants to take on grants and just doesn't have the experience, but really just has a passion for wanting to be successful and say, look what I brought in. I did my job and it was more than I expected, so. It really is, it's rewarding.
I think it would be quite contagious.
Yes.
All right.
Commissioners?
I'm good.
Good.
Director Rickert?
Sounds great.
We've got Clerk Cohen in the audience, anything? Thank you for being here. Director Madison, or Coordinator Madison, what else?
I just thank you for your time and, you know, really, I'm not looking for any decisions. I just wanted to open the conversation and see where we could take it. And I appreciate you taking into consideration the staff that this affects, both in time and staff support. So I'm sure they'll be anxious to respond.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get to those other two counties or three counties that have contributed some insight. And let me know what else we can do in that area and then maybe get a little bit of a plan, how we can come back to the board in a couple of weeks or something perhaps.
Yeah, definitely taking into consideration too, if you do look at trainings and staff. The cool thing about the SWAP courses is they start once a month, so you don't have to wait six months. They've got another one. Doug Bun is such a mastermind when it comes to scheduling and making those resources available for folks like us that work full-time and more. So if you weren't able to start in a month or two, you know, there's another one the month after.
Reliable rotation on that, once every month? Okay. Very good, wow.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We've got 20 minutes. Everybody be back here 4 o'clock.
Okay.
Is that okay? This workshop is closed.